The press in the Down Beach Current were notified of this meeting. A copy of saying was posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building. Would you please take a second, turn off all electronic equipment, and we'll stand for the flag slip.
Attention, salute. Our flag is raised in the sky. United States of America, in the name of our republic, for the citizens, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tom, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Becken here. Mr. Blumberg.
Here.
Mr. Thaude.
Here.
First thing on the agenda, I'd like to give everybody a brief update about where we stand on the dunes issue. I'm sure, as you remember, we had had a meeting in Trenton, I think it was February 3rd, with the commissioner and his staff, at which time we each put our...
Can you speak a little closer?
Can you hear me? Okay, great. Come closer. We had a meeting with the commissioner and staff, at which time we each put our position on the table. Commissioner told us where he stood. For the city of Margate, if you remember, I told the commissioner that we will never sign a contract for the dunes project. I also told him that day, face to face, that we will never commit people of Margate to any future financial obligation. The meeting, all the meetings that we've had so far have been very respectful. We obviously understand that we're on different sides of the, of an issue. I told him that I am there to uphold the will of Margate's people by referendum. Going, and that meeting ended okay. We asked for some other things, obviously, which we've talked about before. We asked for some help on Bayside bulkheads. We asked for help in designing street end drainage and bulkheads, and they promised to look at that. They also promised to look at dune height. About a couple of weeks later, there was an article in the paper about Wildwood, at which time I sent the com... Excuse me, I sent the commissioner a letter asking him to explain the difference. Unfortunately, I have never received an answer to that. However, last week, if you remember at the last meeting, I said there was a meeting the next day. Well, that was Friday, the 21st. We met in Longport with the three Down Beach communities, at the request of Lieutenant Commander John Becken, who is a district commander of the Corps of Engineers. Mostly, the first meeting was mostly about timeframe. The commander explained that there, so far, there is no agreement between the Corps of Engineers and the state DEP. He looked at the timeframe to get that done, probably one to two months, and then all the other things, including easements and things, were talked about. It looks, according to his guess, we're probably talking late August, early September, for a beginning of project. All the communities objected, of course, to have anything like that going on, if it was going to go on in the summertime. They said they would take that into consideration. We also then again talked again about our bulkheads and the other requests that we had made, including the fishing pier. I think the fishing pier is one thing that's already been worked out. They've kind of unofficially agreed to make them whole. They're talking about extending the fishing pier 200 feet. Nothing is in writing yet. After that meeting was over, we had a, Margate had a private meeting with the deputy attorney general, at which he asked me again, face to face, would Margate voluntarily give the state easements? I said absolutely not. And then he said, you understand that I will have to do what I have to do, and we will, you know, take them. I said, we're both in that position, and it was a very respectful meeting, and we agreed to continue talking, and we left that subject. We then went, or some of us went. That meeting was attended by myself, Chief Wolfson, Mr. Abbott, and Mr. Wahlberg. We then took Mr. Rosenbratt and Mr. Dixon from the DEP to Jefferson Avenue and the Bay, to show them our, the condition of our bulkheads, and we had a very nice conversation. They promised to give us some consideration, maybe help us there, help us with dredging, and the other things that I had talked about. So, I guess, I guess I'm a little offended by the letters that have been in the paper saying that I have done nothing, and I have to stand up. I have been face to face with the commissioner on two subjects. I've been face to face with the deputy attorney general, and that's where we are. And I just wanted to bring that, you know, everybody up to date on that, and I thank you. Chief, you're next. The renovations, please.
Mayor Commissioner, you'll see there are two resolutions. The first one being to accept the schematic of the proposed renovations to One South Washington Avenue. We got the information back from the administrative office of the courts regarding the courtroom, and those adjustments are being made, or were made, so we're good to go with that, so we can finally put that up for resolution for approval. And the second one is to, a resolution approving, we're going to bid on phase one for the mechanical project here at Union Avenue, and I'll let Ed fill you in on the details.
Okay. The second one, essentially, it's phase one of renovations or alterations to the mechanical systems of this building. We estimate the construction value is somewhere around $120,000. Essentially, most of the work will be done under the school and the crawl space, steam valves, there's a condensate pump, some sump pumps, chimney, the breaching for the boiler. Essentially, it's that, nothing, all the small, non-romantic items that go into a heating system. So, that's, we want to go out to bid with that project, so that as soon as the boiler is offline, we can get that work taken care of. What this will do, it'll permit the heating system to operate much more precisely. Right now, it's kind of a make or break system. We did do some renovations or updates to the control system, the actual computer program. So, once these valves are back in operation correctly, and these other items are functioning properly, we'll have a little bit better control of the humidity levels, the heat levels, in the, in the building here. Relative to the first one, accepting the schematic design, we had a good meeting this morning with our representative from FEMA, and Jimmy, myself, Lisa, and Mitch from FEMA sat down with the plans, with my estimate, and essentially, they are attempting to help us get as much money for that building renovation as possible. And there were a lot of good suggestions made by him. Jimmy had some real good suggestions, so it becomes how we couch the application, the report, how we phrase what we're doing. So, we're supposed to meet again in another week, at which point we'll have a better idea. In the meantime, we are proceeding with the design. It's our intent to try to be ready to go to bid within four weeks for that project. And they were, they seem to be hap... Or Mitch seemed to be happy about that, because then what it will do, it will give us real numbers. So, once we have the bids, then we have some real numbers to defend what we're asking for. So, it was a good meeting. It's refreshing that this gentleman is, is so accommodating, and really trying to help the city.
Thank you, Ed. Thank you, Chief. You done?
Yeah, I'm done. As the acting business administrator, and from the police department standpoint, everything's good.
Okay, cool. All right. Let's go to department reports, and we'll start on the right with Maureen.
We have the agenda. The proposed ordinance fees are being raised. They're going to vote on them, introduce them tonight, so that's ready to go, and just looking forward to hopefully getting the courtroom started, or approved, so we can finish, so we can get moving on that. But other than that, everything's fine.
Thank you, Maureen. Jim?
Oops. Good afternoon. We're still getting a lot of phone calls about flood insurance policies. In fact, we got six today. People are still trying to figure out what to do with their homes. The highest one today was around $6,000 per year on a flood insurance policy. So, people are still paying a lot of money for flood insurance. What they need to do is contact me. I will provide you information on how to try to, I think you need to shop your policy. I think you need to call a couple of different agents, and you need to get an elevation certification showing what your first floor is, so that we know, we have a better idea what the numbers are on your house, on your elevations of your first floor, and your grade. There's a couple of options we can do to help you get your flood insurance down, and maybe get some money. There is still money available out there through a couple of different agencies that will provide you money to elevate your structure, or do the repairs to your structure. I don't know if people are just coming down and realizing their flood insurance is high, but they're still calling, and there's still questions, and they're still unsure what to do. So, it doesn't hurt to make the phone call. I'm available every day. It only takes about 10 minutes to look over your policy and your flood insurance, your flood certification. So, if you could, just give me a call, 822-1974, and we'll set up a date and a time to meet. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Roger?
Mayor, we're very busy in the zoning office, as usual. As spring arrives, the, we're starting to see that the commercial retail base of Margate appears to be very healthy. We have new stores opening up. This year, there will be a new bicycle shop on Ventnor Avenue, near Adams Avenue, where the Delicatessen pizza place was. There'll be a new rib restaurant where the Fish Kitchen was, up down the Down Beach Deli area. The Sun Bank is now being finally converted into the hamburger restaurant, takeout restaurant, that was approved last year by the planning board. Versus is fixing up the front of their property with new facade. There's a new commercial building going up, next to the swimwear store on Ventnor Avenue near Adams, and otherwise, it looks like a good season, and hopefully you commissioners will provide good weather...
Absolutely.
...so that they can make some money. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom?
The only thing I have is, I just got an email contacted by the county, Atlantic County Purchasing Department. They are, every three years, they, they help facilitate bidding with the South Jersey Power Cooperative for the purchase of natural gas. We've participated in the past some years, we've joined them with the bid results, some years we haven't. This year, the bidding would take place over the next six months, with, I think, believe it's Camden County is going to be the lead agency here, and Atlantic County just facilitates. At this time, all we need to do is acknowledge that we're interested, provide them our account information, and then they go out to bid, and at some point in time, when the bids we come back, if we're interested, we would need a resolution of the governing body to award a contract. It will be a three-year contract, so if you're interested, we can take the step to show we're interested.
You don't need a resolution.
No, it doesn't cost us anything. There's no commitment.
Okay with that? Yeah. Brandon?
We're fine.
Okay, that's all I have.
Mr. Abbott?
Mayor, you'll see, a number of ordinances on there, Maureen Rockham already went over those, regarding the streamlining, updating our penalty provisions for ordinance. Unfortunately, we had to go each chapter separately. That's why there are so many different ordinances in there. I'm also very happy to say that I believe the Margate Little League Green Acres issue with the lease has been fully resolved. As I understand, the Little League organization will be signing that lease. It's for an initial term of 10 years. It's a 10-year option to renew. There is an obligation to put signage upon what we call the batting cage building, and the Little League has to add the DEP under its current insurance coverage. But I'm happy to say, with the cooperative effort of the Little League members, we've got this thing fully resolved now. That's it. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, did you forget anything? You done? Okay. Lisa?
Good afternoon. The only thing I wanted to comment on is, we have the first introduction, or, yeah. We're introducing the capital ordinance for the requested school renovations. That was approved last week by the Board of School Estimates. Supplemental debt statement has been filed and submitted to the state and to the clerk's office, and as mentioned at the meeting last week, it will not impact our municipal budget in the future. We currently have a school debt of approximately $9.5 million, which it will, is due to expire in 2022, and as that tapers off, by the time we issue the permanent financing for this, for this debt to fund the project, it will have a level impact to the tax rate.
Okay. Great. Actually, am I correct, just for the public, am I correct in that that bond issue will have no impact at all on the tax rate?
That's correct, because our current debt is tapering down, and we actually don't have to go and issue the debt for, you know, while we can temporarily finance it with notes for up to 10 years.
And 40% of it will be...
40% will be funded by a grant, yes.
Correct. Okay. Thank you, Lisa. Frank?
Yeah, we just finished fire hydrant flushing. We had to extend it into this week, because the weather last week was too cold and snowy. We've been working on the beach. We have a lot of sand we have to move, and we're getting it ready for the summer season. We're also fixing all our equipment that goes on the beach, like beach enclosures and things of that sort. We also, this week, took off all our snow equipment. We did our maintenance work on it for this year, and we're putting it in summer storage. We've been out, we've had a lot of new water and sewer connections. We put in over a dozen in the past two weeks, and we had a few water leaks we had to fix. And this Saturday, April 5th, from 9:00 to 12:00, at the Public Works Yard, there'll be a tree giveaway, which is sponsored by the New Jersey Forestry. We picked up 1,000 trees today from Atlantic County. Tomorrow, we'll be separating them and putting them in order. There's like five different types of trees and bushes. That's all I have.
Thank you, Frank. Chief Adams?
Just one thing. Everything's very good in the fire department at this time, but this, tonight, the FMBA Local 41, along with Thai School, is sponsoring a dodgeball competition for the students at Thai School, and the lucky winners of the two groups get to play the fire department members in the finals. So, that starts around 6 o'clock tonight, and it is a fundraiser for the school, so if anybody's available, please come out and show your support for the school and the FMBA Local 41.
Thank you, Dan. Ed?
Okay. It's a three-pager. The 2012...
I knew it was too good. We were going too fast running.
The 2012 Community Development Block Grant Beach Access, our handicap access points for Iroquois Avenue this year. We are out to bid as of March 27th, scheduled to open the bids for April 9th, and there's a good possibility this could be constructed prior to Memorial Day. So, we're going to push that. If we're fortunate, and the right contractor gets it with the materials, we can knock that out. We spoke about the municipal building on Washington Avenue, that repurposing. Again, that was a very good meeting. I'm very optimistic on that. The 4086 Hazard Mitigation Grant application has been submitted. That is for, what we are told our allocation would be $85,000, $86,000, and that is for, towards a generator, or the generators, that we need at this building. Again, that, I was told that money is allocated. This is essentially a formality, so hopefully we'll hear in the next couple of months on that. Ventnor Avenue Streetscape, that project's designed and ready to go to bid. Spoke with Jim Rotella, who has put in a grant application for the city. We were not successful round one. However, we are coming into round two. We should know by the end of this month on round two, at which point we'll have to make a determination, do we just go to bid, or do we go try to wait for another grant? So, but that project is ready to go to bid. The 2013/14 Road Program will go to, will be bid on April 24th, scheduled for bid receipt on May 21st, and construction will start after the summer season. Redevelopment of well number 10, the, we're going to award that project. The money now is in place, the bond ordinance has been passed, but again, that work won't happen until October of this year. The well is operational, there's not a problem. This is our general maintenance that needs to be done. The 2000, I'm sorry, the municipal building, this, this building, this building's going to require two generators, because we have two separate electrical services. So, we submitted a proposal. We're going to be authorized to start design on that. In the meantime, we have the one grant pending, and we're looking for other grant apps, or grant programs that we can apply for the remaining cost of that project. Jerome Mandev Avenue Tennis Courts, we met out there with Andrew. We're requesting quotes for the repairs for this season. We'll see how they weather over the, over the, over the summer. This winter was not counting to our tennis courts, so we'll have to see what we're looking at next year. As far as the current road program that is under construction, south, the beach block of Douglas and Essex is base paved. All the pipe works done, concrete is complete, they're base paved. The beach block of Iroquois is being graded for the paving, and the concrete work is 95% complete. Huntington is essentially the same as Iroquois, and the Haberford Avenue Unit Block South has been base paved. So, that leaves Nassau Avenue Beach Block. The water main, sewer main work is complete, concrete work is 20% complete. And Argyle, between Monmouth and Fremont, which is a fairly long run, the pipe work has begun, is approximately 10% complete. It's our goal to get that street completed before the summer season. That's essentially it for that road program, then.
Ed, what do we, with the streets, particularly like the beach block, where, will they be, maybe I missed it, I'm sorry, will they be 100% done, or are you going to do that stub base where they sit for a while, or where do we, where do we stand?
No, it's our, it's our intent for this program, because the road sat open for most of the winter, to do, have them finished, be done with them, top coated, striped, everything before Memorial Day.
You optimistic?
No, it's realistic.
No, I mean, are you optimistic? Are you optimistic?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Okay. There was a question about, there was an issue, I know it's being resolved, but streetlight on Iroquois, that they weren't going to power up the electric company because of...
I need to talk to Ken Moscow on that, because that's also the beach block that we're doing the handicap access on.
Okay.
Now, I have to, in fact, I wanted to do it before this meeting, I didn't get time. I wanted to look and see what's happening there.
Okay.
Thanks.
Hey, Ed, I had a quick question on Nassau. They cut from the street end, like 3/4 of the way into Atlantic Avenue. That's going to be repaired?
Oh, yes.
I mean, there's, I don't know how they'll do like a, they'll cut it out and repair it. I don't know if we did that, or they had to do that.
No, we had to do that.
We had to do that.
And what'll happen is, when they come in to do the top paving, they will, they will mill that trench out, and it'll be done correctly. In the meantime, I've asked them to dress it up a little bit, because it's starting to get bumpy, and it's, it's not pleasant.
Can I, can I comment on the same subject? I bumped into the foreman of the project today. He said that they are prepared to start paving tomorrow, weather permitting, and they should be done fairly quickly, actually, he's saying. So, that should be done very soon. I think everything but probably Nassau and Argyle.
And Argyle, correct, yes. And let's see, we have, oh, the beach bulkhead repairs, and the Summer Avenue bulkhead replacement. The whole project's about 70% complete at this point. The water tank, last November, the water tank painting, the crew's on site, they're, just, so everyone remembers, we're just doing the inside of the tank this year. Next year, we'll do the exterior of the tank. At the same time, the contractor has made all the repairs to the pipe that we had the problem with. Essentially, it was the 90-degree L that was below grade that split. Don't know why. The way it is installed now, there were precautions taken to make sure that it doesn't happen again. Prior to them pouring the concrete slab, I'm asking them to pressurize the system. I want to make sure everything's good. And then as soon as the tank is done being painted, we can put it back in service. But if we had to have a problem, this was the opportune time, since the tank was out of service. And the Amherst Avenue Emergency Bulkhead Repairs, contractors started doing those repairs, finding some debris down at the, at the mud line. Unfortunately, you can only deal with it at dead-low tide. We have a meeting scheduled for Monday, I believe it is, at 9:20, which is low tide, with Frank, myself, the contractor, my inspector, so that we can see how, there's concrete down there. We just have to see how severe it is, how extensive it is, and how easy it would be for Frank's guys to get that out of there, if they can. So, that's where we're at with, with that. Frank and his guys have been very good in getting rid of the sidewalk, getting the site opened up for the contractor. It's just another little inconvenience in a project that's full of inconveniences. And in addition to that, what's not on my report, but what we're actively looking at now, and, and we had started probably about a month and a half ago, I, we televised the first little section of Washington Avenue. We're aware of the flooding problems down in that area. We're experiencing apparently higher-than-normal-in-frequency dry weather flooding. So, what our intent is to videotape all the sound, or, I'm sorry, all the storm sewer system in that whole area, because it all interconnects. See if we can find a clog line, a missing check valve, a broken pipe, something that would contribute to this. And then obviously, if we, if it's simple like that, we find it, we fix it. In the meantime, I've been collecting tidal data. I've been collecting rainfall data. We've taken all the as-built plans for everything we've done in a three-block radius, to try to get a better picture of what's happening, and I didn't bring it with me, but I saw a rather startling chart. And I'm hoping it was a misprint, but essentially, it gave tidal levels from 1911 to 2, no, 1906 to 2011, and it indicated that the high tide, the flood tide level, or I should say flood tide, like a moon tide level, has, has risen 1.11 feet in approximately 100 years. So, while that's not an answer, a lot of people want to hear, it's a fact that we're dealing with. And it's anticipated that by, within the next 50 years, we could see an additional foot, if it, if it travels along the same curve that we, that the previous rises have been on. It's, the rate of rise is increasing, but 1.11 feet in approximately 100 years, so that's it.
Thank you, Ed. Thank you, Ed. Maury, you have anything?
Nope, nothing.
Brenda?
I just have two... Well, thanks. I want to first congratulate Tom. Your son's picture and his fiancee's was in the picture last weekend. Congratulations to them and to you on their wedding. And I'd, I, I'm happy to make the arrangements for the dedication of the dog park, but I just wanted to ask Commissioner Blumberg and Mayor Becker if they're, if they're available on Tuesday, May 13th for the dedication. And if you are, what you thought about a time, 5:00, 5:30, 6 o'clock?
I'm, I'm available, Maury.
I'll have to get back to...
Okay. What do you, so, what do you think, like 6 o'clock?
Whatever.
Okay, whatever.
I'll be there.
Okay, I'll take a gun. And also, this weekend, it's going to be a beautiful weekend, so come on out to our Treat Seedling giveaway. Again, Frank mentioned it. It's going to be this Saturday, April 5th, from 9 to 12. And we're going to have some volunteers there from Margate City's Green Team. And the intent is that hopefully our residents will pick up trees and replace them with trees that may have been damaged during Sandy. And all the varieties are indigenous to this region and there's, there's, I have the species if anybody's interested. And they're first come, first served, but we have a thousand trees, so come on out. Thank, that's all.
Thank you. I have nothing, so we will open for public comment, three minutes on anything that was discussed here today.
Vaughn Rea, Sixsmith, Mansfield. Mayor and Commissioners, thank you for your service. It's always an honor to participate in our legislative process. By the way, Frank, good job with snow removal. Anyway, I want to address three quick things. Now, we got three minutes. The first was, there was a letter from City Administrator Deanie, who unfortunately is not here. And the letter discussed the meeting in Trenton, I think on Feb. 23rd, or Feb. 3rd possibly. And it said that there was a significant result or development coming out of that meeting in that the state had confirmed that Margate City is not legally obligated to replenish, should we need to replenish, in, in regards to this project. And that that was a removal of a significant political objection to this project. And I just want to make sure, in case everybody was asleep during the campaign, that wasn't the objection. The objection during the campaign, I'm going to give you an example here. This piece of white paper, the edge is our bulkhead. This front edge is the oceanfront. This is where we sit. What this project does is it puts a dune in our sitting area and it then attempts to push the ocean back 300 feet. Everybody acknowledges, even the Army Corps, that the, and, with the rising tides, that the ocean is going to reclaim that 300 feet, leaving the dune. Which means, if you don't replenish, you don't have any place to sit. And the objection during the campaign was that when the ocean reclaims its territory, and it will, approximately every three to five years, if there is no federal funding, the city will be obligated, not legally, practically, to pay for the replenishment. And it won't be the 630,000 share. It will be the full boat, which is millions. That's the objection, okay? It's not legally, it's practical. In the past, there has been times when the federal government has not funded and local communities needed replenishment and they didn't get it. So I just wanted to make sure that the record was straight. I was hoping to make sure Mr. Deanie understood what we were talking about because either he didn't understand it or that piece was some agenda-driven propaganda, but nobody would ever do that. Second thing, this is regarding repairing rights and easements. Scott, you may be helpful. Do you have a real estate practice, correct?
That is true.
That is true, great. And from time to time, you probably have to go to the DEP to get judgments and rulings and things of that nature?
Correct.
Correct, okay, good. So with that, and nothing personal, the counselor just indicated that he has more than apparent conflict of interest, okay? There, through, I would tell this commission, if there are any guidance or counsel that the solicitor's given you, you got to trash. Any future guidance or counsel, he can't give you. He is conflicted. You can talk to attorney after attorney, and I suggest you hire an attorney to check it out. Because he's got to be business with the DEP. In fact, I have records that indicate, and I'm still making sure that they are airtight, that when he was solicitor in Venter, and this was going through the dunes project, he made a contribution to a pro dunes group. That's a huge conflict. So I would tell this commission that much like you're willing to spend $10,000 investigating what we'll call Shackgate, okay? I would suggest you spend $10,000 or less, I think much less, because I called four different attorneys and they said, yep, clear conflict, okay? Then you straighten this out because it's going to become an issue most likely. Last piece for you. I don't know if people say you aren't doing anything. What I would say is, you ask the voters to vote on this. And 65% said, we don't want it. We don't want any parts of it. I would suggest that the city begins preparing for litigation, okay? Because a one-time litigation, even if it costs a half a million dollars, is less than the one-time cost of a replenishment that we are going to be obligated to for the rest of the history of our community. The rest of the history of our community, every three to five years, at least $670,000 and that will escalate. So spend one time, you asked the voters, you asked your constituents, they told you what to do. Please fight, please begin mobilizing now to fight, okay? And then, otherwise, it's going to happen, you guys may have a legacy. It might be called the Becker burn or the Talby tax. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Bernard. Anyone else?
Full 22 West Drive. It pains me to say that I agree with former Mayor Rea 110%, but he is right and the mayor sitting there is 110% wrong on shoving dunes down our throats. They don't protect anything. They don't do anything. They're a waste of taxpayer dollars, whether it's federal, state, or local, they're tax dollars. But something warm at heart is the solicitor's mention of that notorious Little League lease. Sounds so nice, L, L, L. The original one solicitor, the mayor thought he could fly by the seat of his pants. There was no lease until I stood at the podium and said, how in the world can you have a mortgage without a leasehold? And then, of course, the mayor in his ever-magnanimous gesture, gave one for 50 years at a fine sum of consideration of one American dollar. However, I asked the same question today. What in the world is the consideration? Since the Little League is not entirely a not-for-profit operation, in fact, they rent that batting cage out. So what kind of consideration are we receiving, the property taxpayers of Margate? Mayor, can you get an answer from your esteemed solicitor?
John, this...
You don't know?
This is not a question and answer period.
I realize, Mayor, but we need facts.
Okay.
And that's a legitimate fact. What's the consideration?
The library has...
What's the consideration, Mayor?
Move on, John.
Well, this is not a way where people get information. You want to do things in the dark, Mayor, there's a high premium for that, Mayor. But let's move on to the CFO's mention of bonded indebtedness. Both she and your sleazy cheesy accountancy firm in Ocean City make it seem almost like it's a benefit to property taxpayers to go ever deeper in bonded indebtedness. But I beg to differ, Mayor. One of the platforms that you ran on was to reduce bonded indebtedness. And I see that there's not only 2.257 million in this one bond issue, but I see no mention of that other bogus bond issue for the removal of something that doesn't require removal for well over a million dollars. Where is that accounted for? Where is that depicted in today's, when you mentioned the money, where is the other bond issue? That's a legitimate question, Mayor. Where's the money?
Where is the money?
Where's the money?
John?
Where's the geld?
We got 15 seconds.
Okay, where's the money?
John, I'm not answering it.
You're not answering anything, Mayor, because you don't have a legitimate answer.
Thank you, John.
And you're scamming the taxpayers.
Thank you.
You don't have to push that button, Mayor. I've had enough to say.
Thank you, John.
Lisa, Lisa?
Go ahead.
Get your chief to throw them out or something?
Yes.
Sharon Simon, shh, John, I'm speaking. You don't speak when I speak. Sharon Simon, 424 North Willow Avenue. This is not a question and answer period, according to you, Mayor Becker. Every other commission before you answered questions when people came up, public comment, answered questions. And in fact, you do answer questions. You just answer the questions you want to answer. And if you don't want to answer it, you choose not to. Did the three of you vote and change that commission meetings, public participation, are not question and answer period? Did the three of you make that decision and vote on it? I'm sorry?
I'm not going to answer your question.
Oh, you're so funny. How is one to get questions answered about what goes on in the city? If you can't come to a public meeting during public participation and get an answer, that you're saying that you don't...
Certainly, Sharon, if someone asks me a question and I can answer it, I will. And I always have.
I have a question for you. Did you vote and decide that this is not a question and answer, Jenny?
Not at this time, Barry, I'm not going to answer it, okay?
Excuse me? He's not allowed to answer questions?
Not at this time.
Why?
You have three minutes, Sharon.
You're the boss of this answering questions? Well, I suggest you either answer no questions, either, even the ones you want to answer, or you answer them all. Okay? And as far as conflict of interest, I made a comment two or three meetings ago that the solicitor had a conflict of interest. He does. He has the appearance of a conflict of interest. And I was treated with such a rash from him and I responded with an email. And it's interesting that Vaughn Rea, I know he's a lot bigger than me and he used to be a mayor, but no one said anything tonight. I find that very interesting. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm not going to be confrontational. I hope that's okay with everybody. Mr. Mayor, the first question you did ask today was, can you hear me? And the answer is, today we could for the most part, but the sound system is still terrible. We had the shades drawn last meeting and I must admit, that helped dramatically. I had no complaint about the sound system. But we really and truly need to put up some baffles. We can baffle Mr. Sewell and cut down on his volume, but seriously, it's not a big deal. I've looked into it. I've sent email to Fred showing that baffles in this room would be really useful and they're very inexpensive. And I really urge the three of you to consider it because the public really does need to be able to hear what you have to say. I asked last time that we were here about snow removal, and since it was briefly referred to by Frank, you were going to recommend something, Mr. Mayor, about snow removal?
We, we looked up, there is an ordinance on the books. I didn't bring it with me today, Steve, but...
242-2.
Correct. And it spells out the requirement to shovel your sidewalks.
Right, within 12 hours of sunlight.
Correct, that is correct.
Are we going to put notifications perhaps in?
What, what I haven't talked to the commissioners, but what I would suggest is maybe, maybe they could agree here, to put that out in, in the tax forms as they get tax bills as they go out.
Excellent.
And then put it on the website and those kinds of things.
Again, now, this may be a little bit of an extreme suggestion...
Commissioner Kirby says she'll make sure that gets included in the next newsletter.
Oh, excellent. Thank you, Mrs. Thompson. If there were substantial remuneration by folks that don't live here and are unable to run down to the shore to shovel their snow in a subsequent winter. The Zamboni Company makes sidewalk clearing devices. And I know up in Canada, they are used in every whistle-stop town along the border where I've gone skiing. And these machines are about as wide as a human being and they're designed for getting snow off of sidewalks. And it might be something to look into, to buy used machines like that. If people are unable to come down, but we're, we're going to charge them for snow removal, machines like that might be useful for Frank's people to, to help clean the city up after snowstorms. I apologize to Ed. I said to him last week that I would look into bulkhead devices, but I'm experiencing the Windows XP, Windows 7 conversion and my computer isn't doing what it should. But I will get back to you on those bulkheads from Scandinavia. And, and just a question about sunshine laws. Don't they require that the three commissioners have their debates in public like this? I mean, you guys don't answer questions as a rule and I'm not complaining, I'm just pointing it out, that your differences of opinion should be aired publicly. Am I wrong on that?
Everything should be done publicly unless it's a reason to go in executive session.
Exactly, understood. So really, the question is not whether...
I goofed. I answered a question. Steve, you have 15 seconds.
The, the question I'm asking is not whether you answer questions, but the three of you, if there's an issue that you disagree on and you have a position, isn't it incumbent upon you to discuss it in front of the community?
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's it? Thank you. Thank you all.
Anyone else?
Steve Moore, 103 North Summer Avenue. I wonder if anybody, Mayor, have you read the Current, the Law, Northfield, Lynwood, Summers Point Current? Do you ever look at that?
I, last week's?
Yes.
I did.
You did. There's a lovely article by Ms. Lo Biondo that says, "Students Have Something to Prove at Jersey Shore Science Fair." And it has a picture of a girl, very nice, seventh grader, dune debate. Her name is Jennifer Galuska, or something like that, of a seventh grader from Galloway Township. And she explores the topic of shore protection, all right? And she was prompted to do this after reading news accounts about Margate residents rejecting the pending dune building project by the Army Corps of Engineers. So we know this is has, people other than Margate are concerned about this. And she says, "I love the beach and want to protect the beaches," she said. "I thought the dunes would protect the island from flooding." She brought miniature sand dunes 1.25 inches high and poured water over them to test how they would protect a simulated beach. "I found the dunes were able to protect the island from flooding," she said. I think sometimes out of the mouths of children comes a lot of wisdom and possibly, this article should have gotten into the Down Beach Current, but it didn't. Maybe it will next week or something. But I think the whole object is to protect the beach. But I think the whole object is to protect the beach, and I think it's a good idea. And as far as Mr. Reel, who is very polished in his presentation, I must say. You know, there was a non-binding referendum, and I don't recall anything in that referendum mentioning spending money to sue the state, which the city will lose. So I'm sure 1,600 people voted, but what did they vote for? They certainly didn't vote for spending any money. And at the very, I think it'd be a very poor idea to spend a nickel, but if a nickel is spent, before a nickel is spent, it should be put to the voters, whether they want to spend that money or not.
Thank you, anyone else? Is there a motion to close public comment?
I'll make a motion that we close.
Second.
Mr. Becker.
Yes.
Bloomberg.
Yes.
Mr. Talby.
Yes.
Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Becker.
Yes.
Bloomberg.
Yes.